I hope it's gonna be a good one.
Yeah.
I thought we meeting the order. The board first, how it all.
Counselor Mrs. Masek.
Here.
Councilman Basin.
Here.
Councilman Caus.
Here.
Councilwoman Nabrino.
Here.
Town Supervisor.
Here.
Highway Superintendent. Town Clerk is here. Town Attorney. Concerned townspeople.
As you all know, this tonight is a wood draft with the town board to go over the tentative budget and come to some kind of agreement. And once we pass that, it automatically becomes on the preliminary budget and there'll be a meeting on that in November with a public hearing. So, what I've decided to do is we go line item waiting at the 2018 effective budget. And the procedure is for the town board to discuss projected expenditures. All right, A two nine nine nine, local resources. New taxes. Twenty seventeen with one thousand ninety-two dollars and carry through to the eighteen budget. New taxes in interest and penalties, forty-five hundred carried right on through and put in the twenty eighteen budget. Franchise fees, twenty-five thousand. The same for twenty eighteen. Clerk fees, three hundred and a quarter carried right through to twenty eighteen. Interest and earnings, ten dollars. That's also carried through. Business occupation license, eight hundred. And that's also carried through. Dog licenses, two thousand dollars. And that is also forwarded. Fines and forfeited bail, forty thousand. That's also carried through. And the total for the revenue side of seventy-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. You have any questions on that? State aid for capita, eighteen thousand seven hundred, that's carried through twenty eighteen. The mortgage tax, thirty-five thousand. That's also forwarded. And the total for that is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Any questions there? Total revenue and other resources, I just quoted that, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Expenditures. Town board contractual. I'm sorry, personal service town board is ten thousand four hundred. That has been increased for the twenty eighteen budget to ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Contractual expenditure, five hundred, that's been carried forward and also has, in the town board, is eleven thousand three hundred dollars.
I'll bother you. I asked on that, why are we increasing this year?
Increasing what?
Well, I know here last year it was ten thousand four hundred. This year it's ten thousand eight hundred. I was just asking what the consideration was to bring it up another four hundred dollars.
As far as I know, the town board has never had a raise. Never.
I just, this year I just feel.
We give them each a hundred dollars.
I just think this year with everything else going on with the real value and people's taxes going, I mean, I don't know if it's for any of the people in our town government should be expecting an increase. I mean, I think I would be opposed to anybody from the town and increase this year.
I, we had, we did get a raise like ten years ago. And being underneath the, I think, everything, you know, with the new, we found, I think, we hope off another year. I know I didn't, in my favor, give myself one.
I agree with that and it's just a hundred dollars each per year, so it's not a big difference either.
You know, with the.
Just leave it safe.
So can what we just went to me.
Yep.
With all due respect, sir, now when it's forcing you, you become town board member.
What's that?
So what?
No, still love to talk. What I would like to put in there now, we have three new board members and a new supervisor that's coming on. So under contractual, they really need to go to trainings. That'll be about five hundred dollars each, so we have three new, two new board members and a new supervisor that's coming on. So I would suggest that we put fifteen hundred dollars extra in that five hundred. We haven't really used, you know, some, we haven't gone in a couple of years, those of us that have been on the board. But I think the training needs to happen and it's about four hundred and sixty-five, so if we add five hundred, it brings that up to two thousand.
The judge, the state laser.
Yeah, but this is where the. Four board members.
Really should go to.
They have to go to training.
Schooling, the training.
Three days.
Where do you see the, how do you get to two thousand?
Five hundred.
What's the town board spend in expenditures?
We don't.
We don't.
Just, just what she's talking about.
Training.
Training.
Training when you renew.
Five hundred dollars in there.
Which isn't gonna cover it.
The training is about four hundred and sixty, four hundred and eighty dollars, depending on what the training is, so. You know, rent replacement, Marshall will go and the new supervisor.
Well, I've already gone, I mean, I've done the whole.
Very good.
Harold, so.
Been a long time.
But, whatever Harold want, there's a lot of new things happening.
I would suggest that you go as a new board member if you're in that election. Go with fifteen hundred then, I just, we use it then, I don't be, you know, I have three people at five hundred.
They need to go. I think that makes more sense than raising the salaries.
Yep.
Who does the training?
The state. Yeah, they got.
State does.
Go, where'd we go?
Well, we went to Albany, I think it's all around New York City.
Anyhow, they got a training.
No, it's in Albany.
How much you wanna put in there?
I wanna.
Suggest you go to.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred total. Right, we added fifteen hundred.
I did, I added fifteen hundred just in case, yep.
Added fifteen hundred?
Yep.
Excuse me, so the state does the training, is there any way that maybe one person could be trained and train the other people?
No, it needs to be done altogether, you get certified as a new member to go.
Interesting, New York is different.
I respectfully disagree, perhaps I'm wrong on this, but I understood that the Association of Towns, if we requested it, would have someone come in and do a mini-training, not only for the new members, but for the board if we so requested. And I think that's something they do, perhaps.
No, I'm not actually sure, I'm guessing.
That's a simple thing.
I think that's a good idea to check.
It doesn't happen. They have a training session.
But they can also do many ones.
The Association of Towns is the one that charges if you go there.
That's right.
If you come here, they will there and charge you for the training. But that's where we actually go for the training, through the association. But they would do it for free?
No, 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 this would just be a mini- course on a specific issue perhaps, but not on the total. Okay, well. So you're suggesting then that we go back to the personnel, personal services at the ten forty and add something to the contractual expenses, is that right? Is that the same, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So that we got it, so. That'd be one and then we took the.
Four thousand.
Add fifteen hundred.
Do we decide two thousand or fifteen hundred?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Correct.
That's all.
So that line, first line would be ten, ten thousand four hundred and then the next line would be fifteen hundred, is that correct? So everybody could follow.
Done. Dance collection.
We have a.
Guys, skip that.
We have justices.
No, we're gonna do the wages, the elected person wages set.
Okay.
The wages person.
Okay.
Eight thirteen forty point zero budget. Contractual expense, twelve fifty, that's carried right through. So the budget's gonna be about twelve fifty.
I'm sorry, but where are you about?
No, it's eleven.
Turn it up.
With the expenditures, that's, we gotta put that to eleven nine.
What?
Well, said eleven.
For town board.
For town board, right?
Oh, for town board, okay.
We got, it's supposed, we've gotta make sure for that.
I'm not worried about.
Twelve fifty nine.
Not worried about the totals, we'll add them up later.
I'm just saying it's supposed to be.
Right, I think we should have.
Well, what if you decide it's the board, what's the board deciding to do there, fifteen hundred or?
Yep.
Correct. And keep it at ten four, ten thousand four hundred.
Yes.
Yep.
Physical agent. Sixty-five hundred, that was carried right on. Town clerk. The attorney, the attorney.
Fiscal agent.
Fiscal agent?
The fiscal agent.
Fiscal, oh fiscal.
Yep, thirteen eighty.
Hey, I'm sitting up front, so I can hear.
Stays at sixteen.
Same, correct.
I just jumped, sorry.
The attorney, town attorney. Eight thousand dollars carried right forward. Buildings. Personal services, three thousand dollars, that was carried forward. Contractual expense, forty-six five hundred, that's carried forward. And total buildings is forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
You, we're gonna have a new building. A new portion to the town hall eventually.
Yeah, right.
Is this where we need to put in a little bit?
Yeah, they got.
You know, as far as they're gonna, we're gonna need tiling or rugs or flooring inside, we're gonna need.
Traffic, I'm sorry.
Light, we're gonna need light, we're gonna need some, there's gonna be some additional expenses to the new part of the building. These are the costs that go under.
Yeah, but they haven't furnished those to me yet, I haven't got those.
I know, but I think we need to put some of that into the budget, we need to add something to the budget for the new building. I don't wanna go crazy.
Do you know anything about?
As far as furniture, what we're putting on the floor, tire, if I can, none of that's been included. You might wanna include something in buildings to cover that.
Oh, add that.
The grant, that's it.
I don't think we have.
We've already, we've already, we've already gone over.
It doesn't come through. You've already submitted, we've submitted it to the, to the state or the grant. It's gonna be tough to change things necessarily, I mean, it'd be nice if it came in, that would be great, we won't use it, but I think we need to plan a little bit. You're gonna need some flooring, you're gonna heat, light, those, that's what's included in that, in those costs.
Heat, that included.
Heat's included.
Heat's included for the year, no, the heating unit is, but not the heat for the year.
Well, that's.
This cost is in there.
What's a new addition gonna be used for?
We're gonna have offices in it.
Offices.
All right.
This is the section under which, electric, heat.
I'm not saying you don't, I'm saying that's gotta be all included.
We need to, but we use pretty close to forty-six thousand as it is right now. So with a new section of the building, we're going to need a little bit added to the town hall in order to heat it and to light it, even with our new lighting and everything else that's going in there. It's gonna save us some money, but we still need some additional cost to have that room available.
All right, we better look into that. Yeah, I would always have a review.
Probably, I agree we need that, we're probably gonna need more money for that, but how do we know what to add?
Exactly, well.
Let's have a check.
Much as our electric in the town hall.
And that building's hopefully gonna be more efficient than all these other buildings.
Exactly, exactly, but you still need flooring in there, which can't add to the grant at this point. You still need to put something out.
And this project is gonna happen this spring?
I hope so. As soon as we hear word, right?
Yeah, that's eleven thousand.
Hundred ten.
Eleven hundred thousand.
Yeah, hundred ten thousand. So think about it, I just, I think I would suggest, you know, I mean, these are costs that we're putting, that we're putting in. It costs for gas and electric.
Okay, let's move on. Traffic control, equipment, thousand dollars. That's the total for that number. Control of dogs. Personal service, four thousand dollars. Equipment, nothing, contractual, seven hundred and fifty dollars and that's going on through. That's a total of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for dog control.
Do you find people if they aren't controlling their dogs?
Yes.
Would that offset this forty-seven fifty?
Doesn't offset this.
Would that offset the forty-seven fifty?
That goes in what you're trying to, with the visa, that it should be all part of this.
Where's the money for the dog by? It's item A two five four four revenue.
Right.
It's under revenue.
There is, there is no revenue for fines.
It comes out pretty equally, what we pay and what we give out is about the same.
Total public safety, five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Narcotics guidance council, contractual expense, four fifty. And the narcotic guidance council, that's just carried through, four hundred and fifty dollars. So the next we drop down to the historian. Equip, contractual expense with historian is five hundred and fifty dollars. And that's why that's total. Celebrations, nothing. Total portal, portal recreation is five hundred and fifty dollars. Refuse and garbage. Contractual expense, two hundred. And refuse, refuse and garbage is two hundred dollars. Now we get down to the total employee benefits. State retirement, eleven thousand. Social Security, eleven thousand. Life insurance, one hundred. Unemployment insurance, two hundred. Disability insurance, three hundred. Hospital medical insurance, eighty-four hundred. And the total employee benefit is thirty-one thousand dollars. Total expenses is four hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. How many people are we talking about? Please, how many people are we talking about? Well, tell them my way. Right? Right? All right. The general B account budget. Revenue, sales tax, fifteen thousand dollars. The zoning fees, nine thousand. Interest and earnings, three hundred for twenty seventeen.
That'll be.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's, nothing, three hundred, they put three hundred in for twenty eighteen. Code enforcement, twelve thousand. Other donations is ninety-two hundred dollars and that's carried forward. And I myself wonder what that is, other donations.
It's, it's the Max Foundation, it's youth, it's youth activity donations that get done, Atigo County Youth Board, Max Foundation, Milford Central School. Some of the other things that go with that and that comes out.
Good shareholders.
And I think like some board members or the zoning, some people don't take their salaries or is that kicked into that too? Cause I know there are people on the zoning board and.
No.
That's something else, yeah. No, this is income, this is.
Employee benefits are for like the supervisor, the town board, town clerk, assessor. Anybody who's carried under general A, these are employee benefits for them.
Are you buying the benefits?
Yeah, the employee benefits under A nine one nine nine zero.
That's all, what are you talking about? Other income, yeah, a lot of it's kept over, I'll repair, I said, how many employees, if they're more than five, it's everybody who gets a salary. Social Security gets paid out of the.
Under general A.
Gets paid in, under general A. Yeah, so justices, tax collector being board.
General Bina.
Are these all permanent people that are hired here for the town?
I'm trying to think, yes. Yes, it's a supervisor, the town board, tax collector.
Yes.
Justices, dog, warden, those folks are the ones that are hired.
They're not temporary people?
No.
Actually. The elected.
Or if they're appointed.
Elected, appointed. Hired.
The assessor, the code enforcer.
Or your planning board.
The planning board, the zoning board.
Anybody who makes.
So that employees, that then entires into.
Health benefits?
Oh, no.
No.
Not gonna serve.
Full-time employers are limited to the highway. That's, that's, that's what my question is, are they full-time?
Oh, no.
Are they temporary or?
Part-time, part-time, not.
They're all part-time.
Except for the highway.
Highway crew is.
Yes, but that's not under this section, yeah.
Highway crew is full-time.
Correct.
How many do you move that, six?
That's five.
Five.
Let's just see. All right, move on, total expenditures. Total youth programs. Personal service, fifteen thousand five hundred, that was carried forward. Equipment, five hundred. Contractual expense, twenty-two hundred, all carried forward with a total of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars.
What is a youth program? Summer recreation for a hundred students basically. Six weeks, five weeks.
This year we had a hundred and ten students.
Hundred and ten students, so the employees.
All right, total zoning. That's B eighty ten point zero. Personal service, twenty seventeen, nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five, total eight, and twenty eighteen, ninety-seven eighty. So they've asked for an increase there, we're not gonna get it.
Good, I was gonna, for the same reason I mentioned before, I don't think they should get it this year.
Is that zoning board?
Yes.
No, it's the zoning officer.
Oh, I was gonna.
Contractual. Contractual, two thousand dollars, that's carried forward. So the zoning, the total zoning would be.
Eleven one twenty-five.
Eleven one twenty-five, yes. Planning, total board, total, total planning, contractual, thirty-eight hundred. And that's it. Total environmental, nothing. Total code enforcement. Twenty seventeen was nine thousand one hundred and eighty. They asked for nine thousand seven hundred and eighty.
I, the same reason I asked, I'd say the same.
Total employee benefits for general B account. Social Security, eighteen hundred, that's carried through. Social, unemployment, three hundred dollars carried through. Disability insurance, thirty dollars. The total on the is two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Total expenditures, forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Which we collected at forty-six, four three five.
It'll be forty-six, right, yes.
Now we're going to the highway DA budget. Revenue. Miscellaneous scrap, one hundred dollars. That's the total revenue, one hundred dollars.
That's the.
Expenses, total expense. Equipment. Seventeen, it was seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. He's asked, he's asked for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I'm sorry Rick is not here, I mean, what are we intending on purchasing?
Rick don't have to be here.
Okay, no, but I mean, what, what are we intending on spending that money that we need two hundred and fifty thousand? Cause last year we only spent seven hundred.
Well, I'm totally against it, because the town cannot afford it.
Well, that's why.
We just, we just don't have it.
No, I'm, I'm, I agree with you, that's why I wanna know why, what are they looking for, I mean, I know we have some outstanding expenses like that, but that doesn't go here, so that's why I wish Rick were there explaining for us.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear from the board.
We, we just, we just got a new loader last year, which we had on, just put into the, planted here. We use them, your equipment, everybody put it, but at this time, that's, we can not do an increase like that.
The only, the only thing that we need to start thinking about is some five-year plans.
I know.
Well, the plan, the five-year plan, I put it back on with the.
You did, but it's not all.
And it won't work now because he's, he's increased his number of trucks.
Well, but his trucks are.
But we decreased one last year because we took, we got rid of.
His trucks.
Do not replace them when they was out of county.
We had, the oldest one would be replaced. We need to start thinking about it.
Oh, actually.
In, enough trucks now over a hundred thousand.
Well, the antibody, the trucks are typing here.
Yeah, but.
Truck's now about a hundred and eighty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, but they're lots of money and they're getting older, our trucks are, have been around since ninety-six and two thousand, so we're talking eighteen years.
I know that.
I think we need to, I think we need to think about putting some money towards each year extra equipment that doesn't need to be spent, but needs to be put into a reserve fund for new equipment. So part of that should be.
Absolutely.
That's it, I think we all agree, but the question.
The council board, the board, how about the funds?
That should have been.
That's been adding all time.
It should have happened every year, we need to be doing that.
So I, I agree, but I guess I just, I think, what, two hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, what was intended in that? Do you know what I mean? I mean, I agree we should knock it down, but how do we knock it down to be fair so that we don't.
We should decap the town highway.
He is in need of a screening, man, that's what he's talking to me about.
Right.
So.
I bought that machine, I would.
We just, I have a same here, does this include a capital improvement, a bond that you know that would, you put money into every year and then as you had requirements, you would spend it?
No, unfortunately it doesn't, so when we had to purchase the new truck last year.
So we pay for it.
We ended up having to take it out of contingency, out of, part of that, of the contingency that's only ten thousand, we put the down payment down. So it's been.
So we had no, we had no reserves.
We had no reserves, no. No.
Is there a proposal on this budget to establish a reserve?
Well, that's what I'm saying, in this equipment for, under machinery for highway, I think we should add at least fifty thousand, fifty thousand this year as part of a reserve towards new equipment when it gets time to do it. The rest of it is all, I mean, it's all been in there, I think. I wish Cindy was here so she could answer some of these questions, but. I wish Cindy was here so she could answer some of these questions, but um, does that include our ban? For the 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 rest of the payments on that truck? Does that include? The loan that we took out?
Doesn't, it would go, this part of this would go towards the motor that we brought last year.
So.
What other?
But but we we had seventy one thousand for this year.
That's a thirty five thousand dollar payment.
Exactly.
What other payment did we have with that?
Well, we took it out of.
Well, you had a, I think you had a truck under a bond when I took it. Yeah, but that's paid for.
No, it's still under loan and we haven't done, yeah, but we took it out of our reserve funds, our, you know.
One more payment on that. Right, yeah.
Our leftover money, if you will. I don't think it went into this year's budget, so I don't even think seventy one thousand.
The loader didn't win the budget.
A seventy one thousand reflects plain old machinery, what it costs us every year for machinery. I think we need to put some money into that to help pay that.
Oh, I agree.
Do I want two hundred and fifty thousand? Absolutely not, but.
But I think we should have Rick's input, just to see what he projects, the, you know, concerns of the uh, of the equipment being, and then put a reserve, I agree.
We get to talk about this again, this this is tonight, this is looking at this, but I.
Yeah, yeah.
This, yeah, because, awesome, then we can, you gotta know what payment we have, what.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd like to say, I'd like to put fifty thousand into that at this point and just see, so it would come out to a hundred and twenty one thousand for equipment. Using some of that full reserve, designating some of that full reserve under total machinery.
Well, I just wanna ask, Ken, is there, should there be a special section for reserves or should it be?
Yeah.
Okay, so it shouldn't be in this, in this section, it should be somewhere else and we might have put somewhere aside.
We haven't put any money into the two thousand seventeen budget to cover the costs of the two vehicles that we ended up paying last year either, so.
No, I, I know we have, I just think we're missing information. And I I'm just saying, I agree we should have a reserve account, I agree it shouldn't be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
This is not just a reserve, we're talking about covering the cost of the two vehicles that we bought.
I agree, I I know it's, yes, but I think we need to get input from Rick to help us make a, a, a reasonable decision.
Well.
Is it possible you could add some subcategories on this equipment, so we could see what we're, it it sounds like we have payments, like anybody that buys a car has.
Right, right.
Has payments every year, that's part of it, then we have a requirement for new equipment.
Right, yeah, right.
It's all in here and it's very difficult for a couple.
Yeah, I think it should be easy to find a better.
What's what we need to do to see what's going on? To see what's going on. Debt owed for this year's payment. Then you're gonna say, hey, this is what we need for, you know. To build another payment, because we definitely need updating, especially the screen plan is, is first.
I'm assuming this also includes maintenance for the equipment we do have.
Pardon me?
This also includes maintenance for equipment that we do have, our current fleet?
I think that's under contractual expenses. That's under contractual rather than under. There's a lot of costs with our old machinery, there's a lot of costs for replacing.
You're talking.
All kinds of stuff that breaks on the old trucks, tires.
Okay, right underneath that, if you look, under contractual. Twenty seventeen, we put forty five thousand in there and he added, he wanted fifty thousand this year.
Five.
He's adding for another five thousand.
I don't have any options to that, do you, considering, especially if we have all those old trucks that seem to be immediately repairs.
Um, I mean, it's hard to, what what did we spend of the forty five this year? Do we know how close he came on that?
Wait, wait, talk to that last.
Yeah, do we have that with us?
We've spent twenty four two ninety. We still have twenty thousand. But uh, coming towards winter, I know, you're gonna, it's gonna be, coming down.
Well, I think to raise that five thousand is a lot easier to swallow than raise the other one to two fifty.
Yes. I think that one we like.
No, um, no, that's two different things you're talking about.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we're talking about the contractual, the forty five. And not the top one, the equipment.
That number there just comes for you increase in tires and 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 maintenance stuff, items. And also, the reason, I would say the reason that's up by grand more is probably why is because our equipment is older than it was a year ago.
Cost of repair going down.
Yes.
But under equipment, as of October right now, we've spent seventy one thousand three hundred and ninety two.
Right.
We're seventy seven cents under the budget at this point and we have two and a half more months to go.
Right.
So you're still talking about stuff that we have to purchase, but the rest of this year, which is going to come down. I would like to put five fifty thousand in under equipment to make it a hundred and twenty one thousand, yes.
Equipment is used to pay the bonds on, we don't have the money to buy a vehicle, we have to go over a bond, that's what.
Exactly.
We've budgeted for just to pay the bonds on.
We'll solve that, yeah. Right.
So we made that.
We didn't put it into seventeen's budget, that stuff, that that purchase amount was not in seventeen's budget. So we need to include it in eighteen in order to cover it, cause otherwise we'd be scrambling again, like we did this year, to do that.
Yes.
Or you wanna put that under fifty one thirty?
I wanna put it under fifty one thirty point two.
Point two, you wanna put fifty into that, right?
I wanna add fifty two.
And then put a one twenty one three ninety three.
Yep. Or just an even one twenty one thousand, I'll go make it even.
Yeah, well, you make one, just to.
I'm good with that.
With the fifty.
Well, it's all tentative right now anyway.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And then you also wanna increase contractual to fifty thousand?
Yes.
Yep.
But I understand that you're not proposing any new areas this year, you're just trying to pay.
Yes.
Project your costs for the remainder of the year and do that two thousand eighteen?
Yes. Absolutely.
So you, so you look at, you're looking here, Doc, we do have anything here on the cost to year to date from no nine and three?
No, I have the.
Is it possible that in the future we get that, cause it's hard to, it's hard to contribute when you have no idea what we really spent.
It could change. It it probably is available, yep. Ken, if you make copies next time, okay.
Okay, so that's gonna be one seventy one three ninety three. If we remove the numbers we mentioned. What's that called? One seventy one, three ninety three.
One seventy one, three ninety three, yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to snow removal. Personal services one hundred thou, one hundred thousand dollars and that's carried through. Twenty seventeen for the contractual, he had seventy five thousand, one seventy thousand.
I would say yes, fifty five thousand right down, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't touch that. And the total for snow removal is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
We only have one person that we contract with for snow removal?
Yes, the town.
The town.
The town does.
Town and they want five thousand dollar increase? That's what you're saying?
No.
Yeah, I think.
He had sixty five thousand, I have this year, and he's asking for seventy thousand.
Contractual is expenses, expenses to the equipment.
No, I understand that, okay, you only have one source, then you can't have any kind of competition about the price.
Right. No, it's it's one source which is.
Town does it, I.
Maybe.
It's the town that purchases the things that are needed to fix the trucks and stuff.
They like it's one.
I understand that.
We buy the, we buy the equipment from snow, that's, do our own, so we don't contract that out.
I understand your question. Yes. No, 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 that's what.
So the one thing we're contracting here is the maintenance on those vehicles.
Yes, that's what that is.
Between these two, a lot of fifty one thirty and fifty one forty two.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
So there is no contract for snow removal?
No.
And there's.
The town does it.
We is.
We is, no, not we is, the town highway crew does.
On every road in the town.
On every road in the town, yes. I'm sorry.
That's a, it's a town road, I mean, if it's a project or something.
We do the county roads as well and get paid for that anymore, you're right, we're doing, we're doing every, every road.
Nope.
No, we're not anymore.
No, you're not.
No, we said we don't.
No.
Okay.
Total employee benefits. Twenty seventeen is eighteen thousand and it carried that right across. Uh, social security was seventy six hundred and that's carried across. Life insurance four hundred and it's carried. Unemployment insurance one thousand, that's carried. Disability insurance a hundred dollars, that's carried across. Hospital and medical insurance nineteen thousand dollars, that's carried across. Total employee benefits.
It's gonna be different.
Forty six thousand one hundred dollars.
Quick question here, this is under the highway department. Employee benefits, but when we were talking in the general A accounts, when we talked about total employee benefits, you attributed that to the highway department. No, five people on the highway department.
Someone, I think you asked the, the question, yeah.
We did, that's not right, it's all of those people that are employed and paid under A. The town board, supervisor.
So it's not the highway.
The highway superintendent.
Uh, he's not covered after.
He's.
Everyone other than, yeah, the highway.
The highway.
So the highway superintendent.
Is covered under A, this is the rest of the crew. Where's that fifty thousand weird one has?
Total expenditures five, five hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred dollars.
It's gonna be less, maybe less.
Seven. It should be thirty three, seven, four, ninety three.
Three, eight, seven, four, ninety three.
Three, three, seven, four, ninety three, I believe. Everybody else good with that number?
I don't know, you've got to calculate. Go home and do it when you get home.
Three, three, seven, four, ninety four.
Three, three, seven.
Three, three, seven, four, ninety two, does that sound good? I said I don't have no.
I have, I have three.
I'm sorry, what? He just did, he just, he just did it with a face, three hundred and thirty.
He's getting short. Here's what is going on, that's what I subtracted.
I think they're trouble with there.
This number and that came out one seventy.
It's gotta be more than that.
Three, three, nine.
Three, three, nine, four nine.
Three, three, seven, I'm sorry.
Three, three, seven, four, nine, three.
You're right, right, this, that.
They're, they're debating that.
So two, right, seven, eight, three, nine, three. And one seventy.
We got fifty thousand. Harold, you have fifty thousand.
Four, four, eight, three, eight, one.
I have fifty. Instead of um. I should have took um, plus the five thousand. Right, I took um, this number here. Yep, that's what, that's the fifty thousand added to that. But that is not. And fifty thousand to that. Oh, there's what I did, that is right, yeah, okay.
Okay, so what is it?
I didn't do it, yeah.
It's all right, we'll do it when you're home, it's a big deal.
You got it.
It's gotta be three, eight, eight, seven, three, eight, or ninety.
Yep.
Eight, eight, seven.
It's gonna be thirty eight, seven.
Three, eight, seven, four, nine.
All right, we go now to the Milford Highway DB budget. Revenue. Total nonprofit tax benefit by county, hundred and sixty five thousand dollars and that's carried. Consular data in the highway, one hundred and sixty three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. That's been increased to one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that's the chip program, that's money coming to us from the state. And you see all these bills all blacked out and bathed, that's chip's money paid for that state.
It's reimbursement, really.
Is he, is he talking?
Reimbursed the, the town board.
Is he really thinking about getting another thirty thousand, I just thought I read in the paper the other day that Chip's money was gonna be frozen.
No.
No?
We were just notified that we're gonna get a hundred and ninety of them, Rick.
Really? Cool, all right.
Of course, this year we're gonna hit nothing, because Rick didn't have it.
We will.
No, we got it, just.
No, we don't have it.
Haven't got it.
Just because the money is on the piece of paper, don't mean it's in the bank.
No, but that's the situation.
You said you had it all in, yeah. We don't get any money until December.
Right.
Then we'll get the whole year. Then, the total for revenues on the DA DB side is three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Expenditures, personal services, one hundred thousand dollars. Contractual services, one hundred and twenty thousand, he wants to raise it to one hundred and thirty thousand. So he's asking for ten thousand, all right.
And this is for what he calls repairs?
Right.
The DB budget.
Yeah.
That's your snow removal.
It's the winter budget.
Yeah. I don't think it sounds unreasonable.
Me neither. Yeah, I think would be, I'd rather be a little safe with that, since they're basic. It's not a, it's not.
Total, total general advantage, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Summer, this is winter, DB is winter, covered. No, the other way around, this is summer, DB is summer, DB A is winter, I was kidding, we have to write it for time.
Is that for winter? Winter.
DB is summer.
Now we get ten two. Ten thousand.
They can change it.
Two thirty, one sixty three, three one three, and then at the bottom.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, your figure is the same, if it's one thirty, it should be one seventy three, right? Uh, it's one sixty three last year or this year, and if you raise it a hundred or ten thousand, you're gonna need another ten thousand in the total. If it's one thirty, you got an extra ten thousand in there, right? So it's gotta be one seventy three.
That was the only increase is the, the ten, right?
No, we went from one twenty this year.
Right, yeah, right, right.
Exactly, but your totals run across the bottom are exactly the same, so we need to go up one more, it should be another ten thousand, so it'll be one seventy three.
Right, it should be.
Yeah.
Another chance.
Right, it's gotta be.
There's an error in Milford, that's all.
Okay, permanent improvement of the highways. Capital LA, one hundred and sixty three, three thirteen, one hundred and sixty three thousand, three thirteen. And that's carried right across. Permanent improvement contractual, nothing. Permanent improvement highway, one sixty three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Employee benefits. State retirement, eighteen thousand dollars, carried across the board. Social Security, seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, same in eighteen. Life insurance, four hundred dollars, same in eighteen. Unemployment insurance, five hundred dollars. Disability insurance, one hundred dollars. Hospital and medical insurance, nineteen thousand dollars. Employee benefits, forty five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Total expenditures, four hundred and twenty eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty three dollars. And that's not a fact because we changed the figures.
It's four thirty, yeah.
Right, two.
Now we go to street lighting. Street lighting, fifteen hundred and ninety nine dollars, carried across.
Okay, the backup lies, since everything's equal between the A and the B, the summer and the winter. Why is disability insurance twice the amount in the summer every year?
Why is disability insurance twice the?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, unemployment insurance twice the amount.
Twice, that's one in the summer.
Unemployment.
One in the summer, one in the winter, they're divided in six month periods.
So it would be the same?
Yeah. Yeah, they changed that several years ago, really. Yeah.
Just be five and seven, now it's six and six, right?
Total income on revenue side is fifteen hundred ninety nine dollars. Expenditure. Street lighting, SL one. Five hundred and sixty one dollars. SL two, six hundred and fifty seven dollars. And lighting SL three, three hundred and eighty one dollars, for a total of fifty nine, fifteen hundred ninety nine. For a total of fifty-nine, uh, fifteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's only three street.
No, street, street lighting.
Street lighting, one of the higher sales.
Right.
Alright, fire, fire district budget. One hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. I believe that is correct.
The pretended issue, yeah.
It is correct for twenty eighteen. And that's only made in twenty seventeen, one, one, one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Fire protection.
We have an increase.
I thought we have an increase on that.
We may have.
We may have.
I haven't been notified, but I see Andy a piece of paper today that said.
I would go with what the increase is from Bill, I, I would leave it in there, I'm.
No, we'll have to dig for stuff, how much is he?
The two thousand eighteen fire protection program is one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven.
I would go with that, I would not.
Was it one, one, three, what?
The fire department in Milford.
Building survey.
Volunteer. That includes fire and emergency services. Right?
One, one, three, five, that's it, right?
That's the total budget.
Did we go through salaries yet?
No.
We missed some of the things.
We missed some of it, it's very.
We need to do the justices.
Yeah, we gotta go.
Supervisor.
Electric personnel salaries. Town judges. Personal service, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. In seventeen and in eighteen, they want thirty-five thousand.
But the same reason.
That is two judges, that is two judges salary.
No, that's two, two judges and two, two clerks.
Right, clerks. I ain't got there, two judges. And two clerks.
There you go.
And they've asked for thirty-five thousand. They.
If they're both part-time, why do we need two judges, why can't one guy take the load?
We try that, but the town has too much business. When I was in there, we were second in the county, Donald Fongian was first.
So can we go back to the streetlights, I just, I'm not sure, I'm after, why is the town paying for streetlights in the village of Milford? They have their own government, their own village.
It's the lights.
A town barn.
It's outside.
Or just outside the villages.
Okay.
What do you wanna do with the town justices and the two clerks?
Do we know why the increase is requested, is it for the salary of the judges or is it for the clerk?
Well, I guess because they had an increase. The way they used to do that. I always knew that we give them two percent or part of the board or something. But now you're getting where they give them three thousand dollars.
Well, I think being fair across the board, we should keep it what it was, but certainly I would have no objection to the contractual expenses being raised another five hundred dollars.
Are there any more salaries or whatever, you say?
We make about forty thousand from fines and forfeited bail in the town, that's our revenue.
That's fines and sort of, yeah.
Yep.
So.
So fines.
That's not reimbursed at all, so we only, we only make about a little over five thousand from. So you wanna leave it thirty-two?
I wanted to leave them, but give them the five hundred for the contractual expenses.
Oh, the rest of the board there.
Okay.
Oh.
It's consistent.
I, I got it.
Yeah, yeah, I think we.
So you wanna raise, raise the contractual five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
There will be one judge, um, on a petition.
There is an election coming up, yes.
Well, there's a election, maybe the same judge.
Well, we don't, to contest the case, Matt, the same person.
Could you just clarify, what's the difference between the salary and contractual?
Salary is salary, contractual is things that go along that you have to buy for your office to make it run. So mailings and stamps and paper, ink.
Right.
Books, yeah.
There are increases in contractual, but by what?
Yes, yep, they're pretty close to, they've been, they've been holding the line at about twenty-five hundred each year. So, I, you know, it's, it's, stuff has gone up a little bit, I'm sure. Postage is going to sixty cents a stamp, so. We're going to cost, it's gonna cost us a whole lot more, it's gonna cost us more than five hundred a person.
Supervisor. Personal service, seven hundred, ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
It's the same, right?
Carried across.
Yeah.
Equipment, five hundred dollars. Contractual, twenty-five hundred, carried across. Total, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Tax collector. Personal service, three thousand dollars, they put in for forty-five hun, forty-five hundred.
For the same reason, I would adjust to that and keep it, I'd wanna keep it as last year.
Contractual, three thousand. Not for the three thousand?
For the contractor, yes, but not for the salary.
Uh, he's gonna.
Go ahead, speak.
I was gonna say, I, knowing stamps are going up to sixty cents a piece coming up very shortly. As in, I don't know exactly when, but they're talking about it soon. He's spent the.
He didn't put anything in for the contract, that's right.
Well, he's got, he's got three thousand.
If you use stamps and you wash stamps down, you put the price like you should say off.
I have to press forever, and I got half the money in order to do that, so that doesn't work.
Yeah, right.
You can't spend eighteen funds now and carry it forward, cause it's costing you just about the same. He's only spent about half on his contractual that we budgeted last year, so maybe we should leave it at three thousand, okay.
Okay. So what do we do for personal services that we left there?
We left it.
Left it as you.
The assessor.
Nope, that's not ours anyway. That's set up by the county. It's so much per.
Well, it's the same anyways.
For parcel.
For parcel, so we can't do anything about that.
Yeah, but it, it's the same as last year.
So what is that now?
Eighteen four, eighteen thousand four hundred.
Town clerk. Personal, nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars in twenty seventeen, asking for ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-three.
For the same reason, I would ask that it be made the same.
I think we're all, is doing the same thing, I think.
Town attorney. Personal service. Three thousand dollars, carried right across, no, I'm sorry. I lost track of it, eight thousand dollars, carried across. And that's the total. Buildings.
We did that, yeah.
Yeah, we did that, yeah.
I still think we need to add the name there.
Highway superintendent.
Ah, we did. Actually, we did that before it even happened.
No.
No?
Who is the town attorney?
Michelle Kennedy.
Michelle Kennedy, who's the town? Superintendent of the highway. Personal service, forty-three thousand dollars in seventeen. He's asking for forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in eighteen.
For the same reason, I asked that it remain the same.
Really, last year gave it.
Well, he got raised, right?
Very.
Shared risk.
Raised.
Board got any other questions?
No, we did, we know this. You have to vote for the changes. You have to make a motion and vote for the changes.
You don't have anything more to say, no?
If you don't.
Do you wanna add something, do you wanna add something under buildings for contractual? I, I really think we should think about that one. It's gonna cost us even lighting, even if we put fifteen hundred in. If we don't use it, it becomes, you know, over budget and fund balance if we use it for the next year, but. I don't wanna get caught short doing it either.
If you think fifteen is, if we're talking for electric, heating, right, utilities, but what about, you mentioned cup floors and furniture, I don't think that would cover that, would it?
Yeah. Yeah. We're gonna need to. I think the justices are gonna move their furniture in, so I think most of that, we won't do much furniture, but I think.
Oh, alright.
With lighting fixtures and that kind of stuff is in there, right? You're shaking your head, no?
It's not included, no lighting fixtures.
No, you need room for an assessor. You need room for code enforcement and zoning.
I know, but their furniture is moving with them into new blocks.
But their floor covering.
But you need a floor covering, and then you need heat and light, yeah, so we're talking electric and, and.
So I'm saying is fifteen hundred reasonable?
No, I would say thirty-five.
Fifteen hundred is not least.
Hit me, Ryan.
No, please.
Um, but are we building a new building, are we moving?
Ananex, ananex.
So, add to this building as proposed to be built?
Yes, we have a grant from the state of New York to put up a new building.
For a hundred and a thousand?
And the cost of the building. And the takedown of this house is all being paid for by a New York state grant.
So it is a new building, it's not just an extension of this.
It is an extension, it's an extension.
Yes.
So this building is going, going.
No, it's staying right here, it's gonna be attached to the side, maybe a.
It's a long.
An addition, how's that?
An addition.
An addition.
We didn't explain that.
I didn't say that right.
The house next door's.
If you remember, the state, we're gonna have a.
The house next door is going down, we're gonna add an addition to the.
We're in the state.
And we're gonna put in a parking lot, so it'll be on the front row, how's that? So people can actually park without getting.
Yeah, and adding offices because we have state. Just being managed.
No, it's, it's good, just we're waiting for state in New York, so.
The town council will be back there, they're gonna be the town, so it's.
So right now, they don't, they're on the coast of the country.
Well, they do, but they're not.
As soon as New York state housing authority says, go ahead and do it.
They're also New York, the attorney's one court, they're having offices. Up to their clients.
Paperwork's been in for six months, we're waiting, it's time to get this.
So there is a change to the plan, you can be done.
Cause this was before I came out, it sounded like a good idea, so.
Wait, hang on, it's not one conversation.
We're waiting for all the papers, I mean.
Paperwork's in, we're waiting for the housing authority to approve it. So the building next door, it's not too.
No, it's, 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 it's gonna happen, the first thing will be demolition, that's, uh, something better.
It's gonna happen. Building is falling down. And we need some room in here, there's no room storage wise.
There's no, we already have a contract with construction and that?
Yes. We're all done with it.
There's someone doing demolitions and it's all construction.
And all this stuff has to be fired away, right, there's no.
Yes.
That's all, that's all.
It's all part of it, it's all part of the grant, it's all been covered, the only thing is.
It's utilities that are not included.
We're always sitting in this room with government before.
Yeah, we've tried to be.
And we know what you're trying, not.
So, we wanna, we're telling them, is that reasonable? Should we say thirty, I don't know, three hundred, a thirty, two thousand, or you think it's a good budget?
I wouldn't go less than thirty-five, I just know what prices are.
Alright, alright.
Yeah, exactly, but I'm trying to be reasonable.
I know.
I honestly, I would honestly, and then like, I would say five thousand. But, but, I'm just telling you, we can all, put it this way, it's something, I'm just saying. I just know one tile cost is a dollar.
Runs alone are gonna cost. Yeah.
And that covers one floor from the unit. If we're.
Yeah, but they're not paying for the floor and it goes inside, so and runs alone are gonna.
Let's go thirty-five for you.
I, I would go with five, too, I'm sorry, I agree, I agree with you.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, is there something that we can go back to, uh, say pursue and tell them that we need more money?
Let's make it five, and we look back through it, and next time we come up here, we'll better put numbers.
Exactly.
How's that? Good?
The problem with.
Or you change it again, change it again, I should put up here.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely.
So let's go five.
So where does this go?
I would just tell you, cause.
It's under building sixteen twenty-four. So it'll be fifty-one five instead of forty-six five. So I.
I have a question.
Did I say five thousand, right? Yeah, fifty-one five hundred. Who had a question?
I don't know, I don't have.
Sorry.
On this exorbitant tax increase.
There is no tax increase yet, nobody's talked about a tax increase.
Well.
Nobody's talked about a tax increase, we've done the budget, that's it, we're not talking tax increases tonight.
I'm, I'm just talking about the email that I had, because I'm.
There are, we're not discussing tax increases tonight, we won't know what final budget numbers are till the middle of November.
Okay.
Sure, I'm not good with.
What, what, what is, what could, what is the penalty?
We're not to discuss anything other than the budget.
Oh, could you just give us a two-minute educational snapshot of your process to establish a budget and then go and determine based on that budget whether or not a tax increase is necessary? Could you just, two minutes, tell us how you do that?
I'm, I'm.
This is, this is a budget hearing, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, but what is the process?
Yeah.
Do we have another, we just tonight is a workshop.
Alright, the, the process is, tonight, we vote for changes that we've made, okay? Then, we can discuss it further at the town board meeting on the fifteenth of this month, okay? At which time, we could decide to vote the tentative budget as a preliminary budget. Once we do that, then we have to set a public hearing for that preliminary budget, which we're looking at the eighth of November.
And once we make a budget, that's the point you determine whether we're gonna be.
Well, we can still make changes, but there's no input, the town board can make changes, but there'll be no input here through the public hearing, so.
I'm, I'm looking for that piece, the relationship between your final budget.
We also have to wait to.
And, and taxes.
Right, we have to wait for.
Is that, I'm assuming that's a good point.
We have to wait for the, close to the end of the year to figure out how much really gets spent in each department, what a fund balance is. You know, you have to work money in as a, as an extra fund balance if you want.
I understand, that's, I'm just trying to get to the relationship.
So that. And when that fund balance is barely established, then we can decide what the tax rate will be.
And if I.
Is that, that would be my question, what, what, the state has a mandatory two percent.
Yes, it does.
I think it's actually.
Yes. And, anything that exceeds that, where does that money go?
That's what we're trying to do, hopefully.
So we hope you don't do that.
I'm quite sure, we all have to say that.
Our, our, our hope and our effort will be not to exceed the tax cap, and I think somebody took that, they saw an agenda that said.
We need it.
We might have to have a public hearing if we are gonna exceed the tax cap, and somebody ran with that and said they're gonna exceed the tax cap, and that's utterly not true.
That is.
Um, this is just something, in the event we need to do it, we had to set the dates to be within the legal parameters, but no one is, is, has that in mind, and I know, I think I can speak for all of us, we're gonna do our best not to exceed.
That's what happened.
But we won't know, so what are we doing?
You mean, November is election day, is it not?
No.
No, it's day before.
Seven.
Seven.
Day after, day after.
And day after?
Yeah.
So do we get to vote on the budget?
No.
No, nobody gets.
You did vote on the budget. You sort of did vote on the budget, you voted us to do that job, to, to your budget, and, but I think we do.
Yeah, we vote for Congressman and law.
No, just like.
Yeah, doing a great job.
Thank you.
Doing a great job.
So we need to move to.
I want to commend the town board on trying to hold this budget down as far as you can, I think all of your intentions are pretty obvious here tonight. In that all of you present have declined any increase in your salaries. Um, at this point, and denied also, um, to other elected officials and appointed officials. So I think that your purpose is pretty well presented, and that is to represent us well and keep our taxes as low, our budget as low as you can, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I move to accept the changes we discussed tonight.
I move to accept the changes we discussed tonight into our preliminary or.
In the tentative.
Tentative budget.
Is there a second?
Here.
Okay, second by Baron, all favor, please. I, both, here.
I'll make it sound. Okay, we're good, here we go.
All favor. I, bye.